To the Pittsburgh Planning Board, Tuesday, March 26, 2024. And just read some general opening remarks. All meetings of the Pittsburgh Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean that the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means that the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand, and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the raise hand function to be acknowledged. One, state your name and address. Two, approach the center table and either stand or sit. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance. Three, the Planning Board requests that comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by stating their name and address. None. Alrighty. And our first order is to just take roll call vote. Not vote, but presence or absence. And I'll just make attendance so we have this recorded. Alin, just say if you're here.
Present.
Present. Or here, present, yep. Amanda?
Here. Ah, also, I was surprised.
Thank you. Peter?
Present.
Paul?
Here.
Tracy?
Present.
Paula? Present. And Alex is not present yet. He's running late. Alright. Our first item this evening, we have our approval not required plans for which we have three. The first one is 920 Ashburnham Hill Road, Dominic Howe Jr., Division of Land, Lot 78R50, and conveyance of vacant land called an outlot to increase the size, the lot size of the abutting lot, which is 78R60, to 21,243 square feet with remaining land of 88,925 square feet. So it's just, and if you want to come up and say anything at the podium, welcome to do so.
I'm just, I'll be here if you guys have any questions.
Okay. We'll just see the podium, just so. Yeah, right there. That's because we have people virtually, so everybody can hear it here.
Alright, Dominic Howe, 920 Ashburnham Hill Road.
Great. Thank you. So it's pretty much just, I think as is predicted, as shown on the plan, is just increasing lot size from one to the other.
Correct. Yep. Adding approximately another half acre.
Alright. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it. And then, any planning board, do we have any questions?
No.
Nope.
No, looks straightforward.
Alright. Just sign.
Is the marker up there too?
Yep, there's two of them.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you, Shantel.
You're welcome.
How are you, Amanda?
Good. How are you?
Good.
We need a minimum of four signatures on the A and Rs.
You want to do it? You want me to do it?
I can do it.
Okay.
Alright, so we're all set with that one. Our next A and R, approval not required under the subdivision control law, is Fifth Mass Turnpike, Monmouth Regional Transit Authority, MART, Division of Land, which is Lot 269-16-0, and conveyance of parcel C on that lot. Let Paula bring that, bring that, the plan up. Parcel C.
This is parcel C, right?
13,607 square feet. And parcel D?
Parcel D is over here.
6,836 square feet to the city of Pittsburgh. With parcel E, there's one little parcel E left.
Yep, top left.
Of 17,124 square feet remaining with MART. And it looks, appears that the land conveyance would be towards processing of establishing either a newer extended public way or a turnaround at the end of Fifth Mass Turnpike, it looks like, too. Looks like a turnaround. If you want to say anything, George?
George Kahali, representing MART, a long time.
Yes.
See you again. Now, this is part of the Fifth Mass Turnpike. About 2012, the city discontinued Fifth Mass Turnpike to build, to allow MART to build the station, what's used as station, and build a cul-de-sac for the resident of Fifth Mass Turnpike. We completed the project sometime in 2017, 18. And now, we want to return some of the land to the city of Pittsburgh. Parcel C is MART, parcel C and E. MART purchased that land from Claygon at that time. And we, and we used only C to build the cul-de-sac. And the D is the discontinued Fifth Mass Turnpike, which owned by the railroad company, and MART has to purchase it from them. And now we are returning these two parcels to the city of Pittsburgh.
Okay.
And just so everyone sees, the aerial that's up there now is what it looks like. So it's, the road's already there.
Yes, it is beautiful. You should see it.
Yep.
And neighbors have been playing in it. It's very large.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, so this is just a follow-up of the land conveyance to help the process of establishing either the, the street, the layout.
Thank you.
Did they already do, do you know, did they already, just, this doesn't impact the A and R, but did the city already do the, the public works convey, I mean, the, the public street conveyance to already make it a public way, or is that happening?
It happened.
It already happened?
Yeah.
This is just land transfers then?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Good.
People using it.
Any questions from the board?
Looks good.
Alright. Okay.
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's the only thing I was given.
There's no Mylar?
There's just the Mylar. I don't have an additional.
So, my suggestion is sign the Mylar now and hold it until you get a paper copy. And then, you can just, you can sign the paper copy saying, "We signed it at our meeting."
Okay.
Because that's just for our records.
Right.
The Mylar is the one that gets recorded.
Exactly.
So I would just hold on to it until you get a paper copy.
Okay.
We submit the paper copies and the digital copy, but we gave it to the wrong person.
Okay.
We gave it to the Department of Public Work.
Okay.
We can get them from there.
Yeah, and, and I'm sure if you know who you gave it to, Shantel can get it from them too, so.
Yeah.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you need, do you need this immediately? Can we hold on to this until we get a copy? That way, we make sure the city has a copy of this plan?
Yeah, no problem, because I have to record this.
You're right, you're right. So, so once we figure out where it came from, you can come get that and then record it. Right?
Shantel will give me a call. Thank you.
I think that's the best way to do it.
Yes. Thank you.
I mean, quite honestly, it's not really a risk with MART because they're going to record it. It's only a problem if no, if they don't end up recording the plan, because you can always get it at the registry. But if they don't record the plan, that's why we keep a copy so that the city has evidence that that happened, but.
The next A and R is 380 to 516 and 483 to 511 John Fitch Highway by GFB Pittsburgh LLC, Claypon Pittsburgh LLC, and Borne Acquisition LLC, which is a division of land to create 10 lots with frontage. And then, there's a number of square footages from lots 1 through 10. We'll bring that plan up. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Stay with me for one second, I'll have it up for you. Alright. Okay. I assume this is what you want, right, the A and Rs?
Yes. I guess I was first amazed that it was actually one, pretty much one lot to begin with, with all those businesses on it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a rather large parcel. And just, a point of clarification, our application is, is actually four owners and 2527 LLC didn't make.
Okay.
I don't think it's a critical.
No, but I'm glad you just read it so that we have it for the minutes, too.
Okay, not a problem.
Alright. If you have any, does the board have any questions, or?
It's a pretty straightforward A and R plan. Matt Lowry, the design engineer, is supposedly zoomed in if there's any technical questions. But again, it's a pretty straightforward A and R plan. If you remember, this is part of a site plan review, maybe a year and a half ago, where we had to inform the board that we're going to start developing pad sites and try to get some more businesses in. So this is kind of an ongoing project. And the, the owners are interested in, again, developing these pad sites to bring some businesses in.
And they're still working on their phased upgrades?
Yeah, exactly. I'm not exactly sure where they're at with that, but I know they're, they're pretty well down the road.
Yeah, it's not at all good, I thought.
I don't know when the opening is. I can maybe report back on it at some point, but they're, they're moving along pretty well.
Yeah, okay. Does the board have any questions?
And the only thing that came to mind is, and obviously, it doesn't particularly matter, but if any of the individual parcels are separately transferred, they obviously still need to comply with the site plan, even if they're under separate ownership. So be careful if they transfer something out of there.
We've had that discussion. I think it's going to depend on whether or not they decide to go with some kind of a condominium type approach, or if they decide to convey them out. So we're not, we're not there yet. They wanted to get this out of the way first, and then we're going to decide if we're going to condominiumize it, which, which may make some sense. You know, in form of an association, that we can do some, some planning as far as maintaining the areas and what have you. But we're not, we're not there yet.
The, the only point to that is, as long as everyone realizes that the site plan is far more important than this A and R, that's really all it comes down to, the conditions.
I don't, I don't disagree with that approach, no.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And that is, it's like, having all of this underneath your umbrella to be able to have everything uniform and stuff is very advantageous.
That's the point, that is the plan. That's where, where they're trying to go with it, exactly.
Great. Thank you. Alright. No questions from the board?
Mm-mm.
Do you want to turn, Paul?
No, I don't. You're doing a good job. Keep up the good work.
Paul, do you want to sign?
No, thank you. I'm good.
He's navigating the screen.
Yeah. Preparing for the next one.
You're good at that.
Yeah, because here is the... Too much to go into, but for the sake of just putting it up on the screen, here is the, here's the site plan. There's a lot of colors, a lot of stuff going on. We don't need to go over it.
No, that was helpful.
Skip that.
Yeah, I am 100% with you. Yeah, no problem.
And again, I mean, all, all the board's materials for this meeting are available online.
Yes, for those that are interested, we have, in the document center, which you can Google, the Planning Board has a folder, and everything is neatly organized by meeting and by topic. And you can find all of the documents that we have tonight and in those folders.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Good evening. Our next item this evening is we have one minor site plan. Chris Noel is proposing an expansion of a warehouse with accessory office space located at 356C Broad Street in the industrial district. And did I say your last name correctly or incorrectly?
Kowal.
Kowal.
Is the correct pronunciation. Cole or Kowal?
Kowal.
For the sake of what's up there, maybe location in building is the best thing? I'm sure there's not a lot to go off of here, so.
So it's technically the second floor. The building has a, like, it's on the same level as the church on the other side of the building. So where that hashed in area is, is the space that we are currently renting. And basically, all I want to do is put in storage shelves, and I want to get it reviewed and make sure it's approved.
So this is what I was trying to get at. Your exist, space that you're using now?
Yes.
Is about 2,500 square foot space?
2,400.
2,400, right around there.
Right.
You're not expanding the space?
Correct.
You're using the current space that you have?
Correct.
On the second floor?
Yes.
Not the third floor?
Correct.
Second floor, same space?
Same space.
You're just retrofitting the space you're already releasing?
I'm just putting in shelves.
And what are you do, what is, what are you using it for at this time?
Uh, right now, it's just storage for minor things, but we're ramping up. And so we're going to have to build shelving?
Yep.
To store more items.
So you're already using it as storage?
Yes.
You're not using it as office space?
There are offices in there already partitioned, but I'm not changing that footprint. It's already the spaces as it is with the offices there. We will probably put in a desk and an office to support the operations.
But you're not presently using it as an office?
That is correct.
You're just there. Okay.
Right, but I'd like the, we're going to get the permission to use it as office space?
Yep.
As needed, as our, our operations increase.
Can, can I say, I appreciate your patience, and I really wish that you didn't have to get dragged to this meeting for this. I want to make this as painless as possible. I'm ready to vote on it if you guys are.
If anybody have any question, we acknowledge that the square footage, three parking spaces are necessary. It's an industrial building, and there is a lot of parking available, this location.
Yes.
Does any member have any questions regarding this?
Looks good.
Okay.
It's not a public hearing, so you want, you go good with, just make a motion now? Make a motion to approve the minor site plan for Chris Kowal, correct?
Correct.
356.
For accessory office space at 356C Broad Street in the industrial district.
Second. With a second. And we'll take roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Alin?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula? Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All set. We are into the public hearing segment this evening. And is Alex, just checking, did Alex check in?
No.
No.
Not that I see.
Because we want to wait, we want to have him present for our continued item.
So why don't we do Montiel?
So first, I just want to let people know, we can do special permit in site plan. The applicant for Clearwater Real Estate Group is proposing to build a three-family residential development, NBD, at 845 Water Street. It's continued from our February 27 meeting, and they requested a continuance to our next month's meeting. So we just need to make a motion to continue.
Move to continue.
Motion's been made to continue. Is there a second? And a second. And we'll take roll call vote on that. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Alin?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula? Aye.
That was in there.
Yeah.
In the document center.
Moving right on.
It was in there.
Continuing.
With a second.
I didn't, I didn't even notice it.
845 Water Street. Continued. Alright. I know people are here for, yes, Tegra Properties, but we're going to wait for our other board member to make sure, because we also have, a board member has to recuse themselves, so make sure there's enough, we have board members present for that.
Is anyone here for 239 Montiel Road? Can we just continue that and be done with it?
Uh, sure. We can take that out of order to do that one. Let's see. On our agenda, we have, it's supposed to be a combined public hearing for the scenic road act with the tree warden, who's not going to be able to make it here this evening. But we do have in our agenda, so we can open the hearing, so we'll open it and continue it. Is the Planning Board will consider a tree cutting proposal for a large tree to be limbed as it poses a danger, as has been indicated, to the right of way in the location of 239 Mount Elam Road, which is across from Cogcell Park entrance. It has to do with, like, a limbing of an existing tree.
Right, just, just as a point of order, just, Shantel, if you can make a note when it's on our agenda next time, that it should say joint hearing with the tree warden on our agenda?
Sure.
Because they're, technically, our agenda's their agenda for this, because that's the only thing they show up for. But aside from that, I'll make a motion to continue because our tree warden can't make it tonight. And hopefully, next month, we can, plenty of notice, we can arrange that.
Yep. Mount Elam, Street, scenic road. Alright. Is a motion to continue?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye. And I'll do roll call. All those opposed, say opposed. And roll call. Alin?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula? Aye. Alright. There are also, let's see, two other items on our agenda this evening. And they are in front of the ZBA, at this, going to be in front of the ZBA. One of them is, let's see, we have Amico LLC proposing to build an accessory building of 3,000 square feet in size and expansion of existing storage space currently utilized by Amico Flooring. The site is located at 5963 Whalen Street in the NBD Neighborhood Business District on the provisions of the zoning ordinance. I'm not sure if there's anybody here this evening for that, if you wanted to, to the podium?
Hi, Greg.
Good evening.
Greg, you want me to pull up the site plan?
Sure. Greg Roy, Dillison Roy, for the record. Good to see you all. It was my understanding that, before I get too far into this, that the board may want to punt this to, after we, we hear the...
Yes.
With the zoning board in a couple weeks. So I'm, I'm here tonight in the event that you wanted to have discussion, but I was under the, under the impression that you wanted to just open and close without, and continue without testing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll open it and just continue it. And you, any, it's like, depending on what happens later on?
Understood, yeah.
You can, you know, whatever you need to do for your, for the actions.
Paula, just a question. Do you want to see if there's any public, if people made their way out here for this?
Yeah.
If anyone wants to say anything?
We'll be able to do that. And we, we can take that. And just as, right, we did observe, though, if you do come before us for the site plan aspect, we're going to need building elevations and a landscaping plan and all that. But I know you got to do step one first.
Understood.
With, with that. And is, and if there is anybody here in, in virtually?
Oh, speaking for the ZBA, they probably want to see an elevation and stuff, too, so.
Yes. In regards to that. Alright. Nobody online?
Uh, there's no, no, it's just board members online.
Okay.
Just Alin. And else.
Yep. And it's, they're seeking a variance from the ZBA?
Correct.
Due to the change in the use?
The, yeah, the accessory nature of the proposal.
Okay.
Yep.
Make a motion to continue?
A motion's been made to continue. Is there a second?
Second.
Two seconds. Alright, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Alin?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula? Aye.
Thanks, Greg.
I'm here for River Street, too. I don't know if that's up next or not.
Well, perfect, because it's, we're kind of in a similar boat.
Alright, let's switch gears here while Paula's doing this.
So we have special permit in site plan review. This is another hearing. Our applicant, Christian, I'll see.
Foded Warmy, I think.
Foded Warmy.
I always butcher it myself.
It was like, taking it slow. Proposes the use of self-storage in existing industrial building located at 320 River Street in the Adaptive Industrial District under the provision of the, of the zoning ordinance with that. And I know you're seeking is the special permit from the ZBA.
Correct. Two special permits from the zoning board of appeals, as well as special permit from your board and site plan.
Yes, and just a matter, of course, it is a by right use there, so you don't really need the special permit part.
Okay.
And AI.
We were, I read the same thing. We're just sort of following the, the form of intent.
We understand, so, but, you know, if, if it comes before us, there's also the, the potential that the, the ZBA may be able to take up the parking aspect, so.
Okay.
If they deal with it all in one fell swoop.
Okay. So I thought you may say that. So I'm assuming you want to do the same thing here and wait until after the zoning board?
Yes, well, correct. I mean, trying to approve, like, a site plan on...
Understood. It's the way the filings happened and the way the, the timing with, with our applicant, we, we had Planning Board filing deadline first and then zoning after, so.
Yes. We want to minimize the ping pong as much as possible.
Understood.
For everyone's benefit.
No, I understand. I was here just to make sure. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any questions.
So, so I did see, just, just very quickly, just because I'm curious, and I'm sure this will come up more at length, probably with the ZBA, but I'm curious. I saw somewhere a comment about the building being unused or abandoned. And I remember dealing with the prior owners. It feels recently, it could have been forever ago, I don't know, but I feel like, hasn't it been used up to recently?
So, truthfully, I'm not exactly sure. I know our, my client has been negotiating the purchase of the property for several months now. I know that the determination, again, from the building, building commissioner, was, I think, where you saw that note, that the determination that, that he made was that it was an abandoned use, that the, the storage use. We're proposing the same use as has been, as has been historically used, but the determination was made that it was abandoned, so. And quite frankly, my client hasn't objected to that. So I believe it has been, you know, it has, it has not been used for at least a period of time. I would have to look into exactly the date of last, that it was last year, because I don't have that off the top of my head tonight, but.
It's fine.
You're right, it's probably more of a, I, I, a little bit of a preview to the two weeks from now, when I'm, before the zoning board of appeals, so I appreciate that.
It, it's, like Paula said, I thought it was an allowable use, but it seems like it's even easier if it was actually abandoned, was still, you know, being, maintaining that star storage use, which.
Yep.
I know they have been in front of us quite a few times over the years, about, many years ago, about doing marijuana facility there and other stuff, and.
Yep.
And so, anyway.
Is there, and I'm out of curiosity as well. I saw the, on the form of intent, it said a special permit from the city council, and I'm confused as to, I'm just, wanted clarification on what that was for.
I don't, I have it here. You, I don't know if you want me to read that section? I am not sure either.
Okay.
Uh, cause I didn't see anything that we were proposing that would have required relief from-
I didn't see anything in the table.
No. Um, yeah, it was just a, uh, there, there was two paragraphs in this, there was actually two form of intents issued, the one by the pre, by Mr. Barbadoro before he left, and that was issued back in the September, September twentieth. And then there was a follow-up one.
Okay.
Uh, issued in December. So I'm reading from the December one, and there's two paragraphs relative to the special permits and the lapsed use and the, and that kind of thing, site plan approval. And then there's sort of just some catch-all, like, uh, you will need to apply for the following permits and licenses, and they list a whole bunch of them. And one of them said special permit from city council. I could not determine what portion of the code we would need to, you know, um, come before the city council on, so.
I guess I suggest you reach back out to, and ask for clarification what that would be for.
Yep.
It used to be, I think, is very limited in our table of uses about what a special permit from the city council would require.
Right.
I think we even took back, uh, or changed over like amusement facilities and things. It was a carry, old carryover, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it looked to me that it was, the use didn't require it, so I'm just not sure.
Just want to make sure something I need to be aware of.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do. We'll reach out.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Alright.
To our, April Meehan.
A motion has been made.
Second that motion?
With a second to continue. And we'll take, oh, wait, wait. Before we do that, and I should have asked, if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak before we continue it.
My name is Dorothy Rulo.
Dorothy.
I have been part of Star Storage.
Can you just pull the microphone down a little bit?
There you go.
Perfect.
Dorothy Rulo.
Awesome.
I have been part of Star Storage since it began in the early eighties. It's never been abandoned. I'm still working there now. And I don't know why this has been declared. Can you explain this to me?
I, I don't know that it's all that important. My question was more of a technicality. It, I, I, I don't know how important it is to what we're doing. It might be to the ZBA, but it's not to us. So. You're welcome to.
If, if I may comment, the, um, we filed a, the form of intent wasn't, was filed with the, with the building commissioner, which is a, a process where they review the, um, the proposal, um, relative to the ordinance and the requirements in the city, and they issue us a determina- a zoning determination. So it was the building commissioner that, that said, I have reviewed the form of intent, uh, to purchase and renovate. The property is located in the Adaptive Industrial Zoning District based on the table of blah. Reviving an abandoned, pre-existing, non-conforming structure per section one eighty of the, of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance proposal is to reopen the pre-existing self-storage facility. So, I'm not exactly sure. My office did not file the application for form of intent. So, but it was, it was, that language came directly from the city building department. So, sounds like we have some corrections to make on that front.
Yeah, you might want to look at the, um, submission of the form of intent to see what was-
Yep.
Could easily be a miscommunication.
Are you speaking about, um, Commissioner Zemmell?
No.
Is that who you're talking about?
Uh, the new commissioner is the one, yes, the acting, the new acting commissioner.
I had a lengthy discussion with him and also a woman on the economic development. And we had a very, uh, interesting conversation and, and he accepted that
Okay.
upon, uh, the use of that building that it's always been stored.
Good. So I think that makes our life a little bit easier, especially relative with the zoning board.
I hope so.
Yeah, thank you.
Especially for the-
I think I need to get him, i- if he's willing to modify his, uh, his findings, so.
Especially your testimony being a, you know, a current occupant of the building.
Appreciate that.
That, 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 that kind of goes to the, the core of whether it's being used or not, so, thank you for the comments.
I just wanted to come and tell the truth about that.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that very much.
Alright. Being said, is there anybody else virtually, or? We have-
Good evening. Christine Tree, Chair ZBA. Um, I just wanted to comment, um, this is not before our board yet, it but is coming. Um, consideration, uh, and always if the relief that is required of us could be limited, it is best. Um, consideration of whether or not there's any reason not to elect treatment as the industrial district should be undertaken. Um, and if there's any evidence to present as of lack of abandonment, uh, the applicant should look at what relief is requested before the board. But the board does welcome the hearing on this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything helpful for the applicant?
Yep, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
It might even be beneficial of you to get s- you know, signed testimony from the current owner saying it's, it's still in use. That might help you.
Oh, that's good.
Alright.
Did we vote on it?
No, 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 we was making sure that we would, there was no other comment.
Yep, that's fine. Just seeing where we were.
Yep. Hope and make a continue. And there was a second?
Mm-hmm.
Was there a second?
Yeah, Peter seconded.
Peter seconded, thank you. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Allyn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Do we have Alex?
Nope.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
No Alex yet, thank you.
Thanks Greg. And I, for, for the record, because we are moving at light speed, although five seventy-nine South will take some time. Well, I'm only saying this because Jeremy Roach had asked me if I could give him a ballpark for when it would be, because they had a, they had a meeting tonight. And we're a little early from the ballpark that I gave him, so. So anyway.
And I'm still waiting, and I, um, I know people are here for five seventy-nine South Street, but I want to really wait till we have our other board member present, so I'm gonna take-
Do you think we provide a quorum or an argument?
I think so. I, I mean, we'll still ha- let's see.
You still have a quorum. There's five of them.
We'll have five instead of six.
Which you, which you would need all five votes in the affirmative to, to pass it. Well, that's why we always try and make sure that, even though, this isn't about five seventy-nine South, I'm not speaking on behalf of that, just as the board in general, we always try to make sure that as many people as possible can vote, because it's in everyone's best interest.
And I know we're moving, I mean, our agenda's, because we have to continue so many items. So we're gonna go into some other, other, um, business items, and then when, hopefully, in a little while, we'll check back, see if our other board member shows.
Yeah, you're running out of things. You have two quick things, and that's-
We're gonna spend time on like minutes.
Oh, that's, that's right, we do have minutes.
So underneath our other business this evening, we do have, um, a Shea Street solar extension request. That was a mutual agreement for an extension of time to actually hold the hearing. So there was an application submitted back in August, I think it was. Was it August, September?
Yeah, it went till, uh, this meeting.
Yep.
Yep.
And then there was an extension signed until this date, and their applicant is requesting, and we're looking forward to doing this till September of twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, so about six months.
Mm-hmm, correct.
That time, so. App, in that endeavor, there's a request to extend, for extension of time to hold the hearing till September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. We'll take-
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Continue to, the date on the letter.
Well, not to continue, well, yeah, to continue the extension to approve it.
Yep, right, yep.
Alright, we'll take roll call vote. We've got, uh, all the-
Second if you need it.
And, that's right. We have a second from Amanda. Motion's been made with a second to extend. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Allyn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Shea Street Extension. Till twenty-four, twenty-four.
Um, Chantel, I know I've said this before, but just, just so you can make a note, and I'll hopefully remember by the time they're actually on our agenda, but, uh, it's been so long, we should send out notices again for Shea Street.
No, not until the hearing.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm saying when we get to that point, it's been, we sent out notices in July of twenty-three.
Right, correct.
It's been so long, we'll send out notices again so that everyone's aware when it's on our-
So it's, it's not a, a hidden subject. There's, um,
Absolutely.
There's a lot of, uh, it looks like they might be, um-
They're moving forward. Um, they're sending, Jamie notified me today and said they're moving forward with peer review, so.
With a peer review. So they're looking at at least getting a document peer reviewed. Understand too, there's been, um, a zoning petition put in place for ground-mounted solar, which pretty much, I'll say freezes the process until that's been vetted at this point in time.
Correct.
Thus the extension.
And, and, because I know the Ward Three Council's here too, just, the, the peer review has not started yet. It's just, hopefully tomorrow the check comes, and then at some point it starts and, good. I have no idea how long that's gonna take. And then after that, we'll figure out where we're at and go from there.
Yep. The next item we have is greeting the Gateway Cities Grant. Oh, wait a minute, is Jeremy available?
No.
Is he gonna-
I think I said after seven.
Oh, okay. Well.
I, this is at seven or seven-thirty, to be honest with you, because quite honestly, I didn't expect us, I didn't expect us to go through eight things in forty minutes, so.
I believe we're, went on to two pages.
Yeah, but five seventy-nine South will, like I said, that'll take a, a little while. And, and quite honestly, just so you know, when we get to five seventy-nine South, I will probably leave because all we have is Green Gateways, and I'll jump in virtually after five seventy-nine South is done.
Okay.
Because there's no sense in me sticking around here just for that, so. Cause there's nothing else.
I want to, that would be just, that's just a recommendation. Anyway, for that. We have communications, and so maybe Chantel can talk about that. There seems to be notification for public comment on Twin Cities Rail Trail on a waterways application.
It's, it's really just for your, your information. If you wanted to comment, it was addressed to the planning board, so.
Okay. That's also, um, for anybody, um, virtual as well in our, in the packet, as FYI.
And for what it's worth, I ran into Counselor Schultz before this meeting, and he mentioned to me that in his Ward One meeting coming up in-
April sixth?
April sixth, not only will, uh, Amanda be there, but, uh, he mentioned to me that they're gonna be discussing the, um, rail trail connector with, um, Commissioner Erickson, and they'll be, have an input section on that. And I told him that I might try and show up if that's on the agenda, so. Just wanted everyone to know that they might have a conversation about that, so, might be helpful to hear.
April eighth.
Perfect.
April eighth.
Thank you.
Great rail trail.
And we do have communications. If, um, Chant- Chantel was at a meeting, it was last Thursday regarding Game On for an update. And again, it's just communications about the meeting that was held.
Um, so, um, I, the owners, um, came to a meeting with some of the department heads. The traffic, um, sergeant, the police sergeant was there to talk about the traffic. And then we had, um, Herlin, uh, the conservation agent. I think, um, what's been happening is a lot of butters have been very concerned because there's a lot of activity going on at Game On, um, and a lot of folks, um, say they're having runoff issues. It turns out that, um, a parcel adjacent to Game On, um, did clearcutting, and that seems to be the culprit for the extra water. But Game On is doing work on the bottom field. I think, do believe it's Field Nine. They've been, um, leveling out that area, and they're saying that they'd like to use it for parking. I know that's not part of the original plan, talking to Paula. A couple of other comments that came up is their use of temporary lighting for certain events, which tends to be quite bright, um, and butters aren't, um, overly happy about those lights shining into their windows. We did ask about, um, the sound barriers, um, and, um, in, again, they said they installed them, but, um, it doesn't seem like they were all installed, so that's another, another thing. So at this point, I, I was gonna put, um, a list of things together, as far as some outstanding things that we may want to discuss with Game On. Oh yeah, and the last thing was the bond was discussed. I think in the original conditions, there were supposed to be money set aside for a sidewalk, which was supposed to be, um, a hundred thousand dollars. And, and they took out a bond, they said, for eighty thousand for that sidewalk. Now, that wasn't the condi- the condition and the original decision. So I do think perhaps a meeting, um, another meeting with Game On might be a good idea, so, um, th- those sorts of issues could be talked out. It depends on the approach, and we may want to follow up with Liz on this about what our next steps are, since, um, some of the conditions aren't a hundred percent at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
I was trying to find the, I was trying to find the letter that I wrote.
More to come on that subject.
Anyway, yeah, we'll, we'll do it another day. I was trying to find the le- I drafted, I was supposed to be there, and I, my son ended up being sick, so I wrote Liz a letter with photos that neighbors had sent me and some of the concerns that Paul and I had gone over, um, over the years that, that we're finally catching up on. And I did talk to Peter, Peter San Germano, uh, one of the owners called me after the meeting, just to follow up, and I reiterated to him that, you know, that Paul and I both would like, either the prior engineer, who I believe was Dillison Roy, or a new engineer, to look at the plans and, and make notes of any changes. Apparently, um, Liz was telling me that, um, the Game On folks and Liz, when they were looking at some of the aerials that I shared in that image, they thought that most of it was, looks like it was designed to the site plan. Uh, but I had shown her in that packet I just sent you, Paula, showed you, Paula, that there's, there are some areas that were pretty significantly different, particularly the parking lot behind the main building. It, if you look at the aerial, it looks significantly different from what's on the site plan. So, I told Peter, I said, just have someone re- redo an ASBIL plan, redraft the plan and say, okay, this is what was supposed to be, this is what actually is, so that we can then move on to what they plan on doing next, because I was told, though I don't know for certain, that they have plans for other things down the line. So, uh, I'd like to kind of hash out what's there now before we get into what's going to be there in the future. And then we'll cross all those bridges when we get there, so. To be continued.
To be continued. We do have, I know our minutes this evening. I'm stretching it.
I don't think I have Alex's number. I was gonna say, maybe I can text him.
No, do we have that? We could email him?
Yeah, I can send an email. Oh, I do have his phone number. I'm just gonna text to see if he's coming.
He's on his way back from Boston, so. Easily to get hung up in traffic.
Yeah, anything could happen.
Yeah.
I think I've been on the board long enough to say that this is rare.
Hey, this is what happens when you've got all the materials together and streamlined. Okay?
I can tell.
So. To get all, all the information that's necessary, send, we know who's coming and who's not, and they put in-
Hey, I sent him a ch- no idea if that's our phone number, but.
Okay.
We will find out.
Do you want to bring up the minutes?
Yep, that's what I'm doing right now.
We've got three sets of minutes. We got them from January, our, our CDBG meeting minutes. We had two, um, meetings in the month of January. We already approved our regular board meeting minutes. This is the CBG hearing minutes.
Um, minutes. You want to do block grant first?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right, January eleventh. Of course, does any board member-
Says he's five minutes from his house.
Oh, okay. Great. Does any board member have any comments on the CDBG meeting minutes?
Nope.
I read through mine, I didn't have any comments on it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second to approve the minutes for January eleventh, 2024, as submitted, roll call vote, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Lynn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
All right, our next set, we've got, here you go, February twenty-seventh, 2024, just last month. I did go through them, I think Paul took a gander at it as well. We took, we, yeah.
Oh, I'm noticing, just spelling at the very top, I caught it later on, I didn't catch it there. Principal Planners, P-I-R-N-C-I-P-L.
We've fixed that, so, minor correction.
I caught it at the end, it was, it was at the bottom of one of these, but.
Can I also, just minor, I don't have an E in my name, it's just T-R-E-C-Y.
Okay.
Thank you.
It doesn't bother me.
That's not minor, that's not minor, that's your, that's your name.
It's not a big deal.
I getcha, no, that's important.
Wait a minute, let me think.
Okay. I already went through, I think, most of the other ones, I'm fine with the rest of it. Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second to approve as amended. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, and roll call vote. Ellen?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
And I didn't catch that either.
Same thing.
And same thing.
Principal.
Same thing, and same name.
And Tracy, yep.
Tracy's name. Corrections there, too. Is there anything a board member would like to go through while we're here on it regarding that time period?
I already covered it. Make a motion to approve as amended, well, to approve, oh, as amended, we do have those two changes-
Same thing.
For this one, too, yep.
Second thought?
A motion's been made with a second to approve as amended. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, roll call vote. Ellen?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
I do think someday, the rest of the board should see your red lines, Paula, because my eyes go cross-eyed when I get the red line changes, it's very hard to keep up with those. All right.
She is good.
Mm-hmm.
She is good.
Melissa's doing a great job putting them together, too.
I'll let her know.
Yes, absolutely. And it's like, the most recent one, they're easier when they're most recent. It's more, it's challenging to have to go back. That's where you spend a lot of time.
Does that bring them all caught up now?
No. No.
We're getting there, though.
I see like we've had a lot, that's why I asked.
There's three now, we did three last meeting.
Right.
We're gonna try to keep multiplying them. Hopefully, we'll have like, the most current meeting, plus whatever, a couple more.
It's nice that they're all recorded now.
I think it's November, November, December, maybe March and April?
September, and, no, I think March is done, maybe April, May.
When we were in the fire station. That's it, like, there's no recording, so.
But, we've got all recordings for those.
The new, yeah, the newer ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Fringe every time I go back and watch.
And we have-
Did I say that? I did say that.
There's also a transcript, so everything we say-
No, I mean, I try not to watch.
Every utterance is being captured. And you should see how they spell our names on the transcript, or how it interprets it, so. Like the A's. So we just do, only do have that one last agenda item in front of us this evening, and I'm just gonna be there in a few minutes.
Out of curiosity, Chantel, so it says, "The greening the Gateway Cities Grant." You have, obviously, I talked to Jeremy about, about the FPS thing on Academy, but what does National River Watershed have to do with that?
Are you here tonight? Yes, you are.
Well, we haven't, Paul hasn't called it yet, because we're waiting for the other people, but is that-
They have a grant also going for-
Oh, they're two different ones?
Yes.
Oh, well, we can have you speak about that, that would be fantastic.
I'm sorry, I just assumed it was under the same grant, okay.
Yeah, so it's the same grant program, but actually, we're a second applicant for the grant as well. So I'm with the National River Watershed Association, and I'm here today to just talk about our-
Can you just get closer to the mic?
Sorry, my name is Ryan Henrichus, I'm the Senior Landing Climate Program's Associate with the National River Watershed Association, and I'm here to get approval for a proposed tree planting that we are hoping to do off John Fitch Highway. Do you guys have the, the plan, or do you need me to go through it?
Is, Chantel, is it in our-
I think I uploaded it to the folder, it's-
Let me get through it, hold on.
Under Other Business.
Spare with me for one second. So we have the, there's a document, NRWA GGC tree planting?
Yes, that's-
That's the one you want?
Yep.
Okay.
The document's mostly text, but then there's a map further down.
Okay, do you want the map?
Sure, yeah. It might be most instructive.
Okay.
That one's fine.
Is this the United Way property?
It is, actually, yes. Yep, there's the United Way and the Community Foundation share a building there at six four nine John Fitch Highway, and the National River Watershed Association was hoping to apply for a grant through the Greening the Gateway Cities program, to plant some trees on that property as basically part of a proof of concept, so that we can do more ambitious projects down the line. This one would involve planting thirty trees, twenty red maples, and then a smattering of other trees, including ginkgos and things of the nature, elms, yeah.
And that's mostly to the rear of the property?
It is, yeah, most of the area in the front there doesn't really have enough clearance to plant the sort of large shade trees that the DCR is hoping to plant. And we had asked them about maybe moving back the parking lots a little bit, but I, I guess they can't spare the, you know, spare that parking there. So there's an area off to the side, in which we'll be removing about nine hundred feet of asphalt, and then, you know, treating the soil there, so that it's capable of supporting larger trees, and then planting about three or four there as well.
The only, the only question I have, looking at this, is if you're removing parking, we just need to make sure that there's adequate parking according to the table of uses for that property.
Okay.
So, there's a site plan for that, we did one somewhat recently, when they did an extension. Remember, they put an addition-
You can call that recent.
Five years, I don't know. I'm guessing, I don't know. So they, they did an extension, an addition on the building, we did a site plan. You should find that site plan, and just make sure that, I mean, if it's, if it's a, if it's inconsequential, and there, you know, there's thirty extra spaces, then it might not be an issue. Worst-case scenario, just the site plan gets modified and comes back, just so that we can stamp and sign off saying, "Yes, no problem," because you are, looks like you're removing parking, and anytime you remove parking, we need to make sure.
Business or professional office, if that's the category, is one parking space per four hundred square feet of gross floor area.
Okay.
I can tell you the gross floor area, ballpark. Give me a second, what, what's the address?
It is six four nine John Fitch Highway.
John Fitch Highway. Let's see, we're the rough building size, and we can do a ballpark, not that it, not that we're the ones that decide this, but-
Yep, and I think it should be roughly two to three spaces, I believe three, but-
Nine thousand square feet. Twenty, twenty-two and a half, twenty-three spaces, yep. It looks like there's a lot there. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Looks like, yeah, it looks like there's in excess of thirty even without that. But, just double-check that, just make sure that, because you, obviously, you don't wanna tear up the pavement and then violate a permit condition, or violate the site plan.
Of course, yeah.
But aside from that, that's-
So, from us this evening, you're looking for a recommendation?
Uh, yes, I believe so, we need to get in this grant application by the fourth, and so we, we wanted minutes, that we brought in front of the board, and then I guess I recommend, or, I, I-
We approve of the concept?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I have, I mean, the only, the only other comment I have is, is if those trees are at all in proximity to the sidewalk, to the city sidewalk, that you make sure you approve them with the DPWs, the roots aren't gonna undermine our sidewalks.
Okay. DPW, all right.
But aside from that, I, I have no problem with it.
Does any board member have any question? Comment? All right.
Make a motion to give an affirmative recommendation in concept to the planting of trees according to the plan, just based on the comments that I already gave.
For the grant proposal, yep.
Yep, yep.
And we'll take roll call vote, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Ellen?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye, and I'll ask, Alex?
No.
No Alex yet, all right.
Jeremy's here, if you want to-
We can do that.
All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ryan.
Good evening.
We were way ahead of schedule.
I guess so, I'm glad our meeting ended.
We actually were ready for you about twenty minutes ago, we were killing time. No, 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 you're ahead of schedule, we're waiting for a board member for another hearing, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, so, thank you for having me today. Jeremy Roach, Assistant Superintendent of Schools for Finance and Operation for Pittsburgh Public Schools. So we are, we're looking to pursue the Greening the Gateway Cities Grant for one thirty Academy Street, which is on the same street as Long Joe Middle School, formerly Pittsburgh High School. It's the end lot, so in your packet, you have just a couple of highlights of the grant. I think you probably are familiar with it, but I cut and paste a couple of those for you. And then, a little bit of an overview on page two of, you know, some of the designs and/or, I should say, some of the ideas that we have for, for, thank you, for Academy Street, in addition to the design that we worked on together with a partner, an urban forester for DCR, so. And then the last page shows some examples of the types of trees that are approved for this type of grant, because it's not every, every kind of tree that could be actually planted, especially in a residential area like that. So it was good to have someone from DCR working with us. So, I think for us, you know, Long Joe Middle School is really landlocked in the sense of it does not have green space or field space for the students. The students in Massachusetts Public Schools now in grade eight are required to do civic projects, they're typically group projects, and last year in May, across the schools, at the Memorial Middle School Library, the kids in the eighth grade presented all their civics projects. And Long Joe's themes typically were centered on improving the building, but also finding green space, as the one school that didn't have any kind of land. So we started conversations with the Assessor's Office and various departments in the city. They pointed out that one thirty Academy Street was an abandoned lot that the city had owned, and the property committee signed it over to us in October, so it now is Pittsburgh Public, it's under the auspices of the Pittsburgh Public Schools, and we have been updating it, we had a landscaping company come out and just clean it up for us a couple months back. We are working with them also on pricing for the trees. So, we pursued, we're pursuing the greening the Gateway Cities Grant, we would like to, because we think it would really provide an opportunity for us to transform that particular lot, which is on the corner of Academy in Spring, I think you can see it there. You know, we'd like to do some other things on Academy Street as well. We've been talking to folks in the neighborhood, we are working with some, the city solicitor on one twenty, which is for sale, but specifically for this, it's one thirty Academy Street, and, and again, I think you have an outline there, a map rather, of what that could potentially look like in terms of turning that into a nice area for the, for the students in the school, but really for that neighborhood as well. So, glad to take any questions, and, and again, appreciate the time and sorry I was late.
I think it's-
Not at all.
I think it's great, I, I put up the GIS, if anyone's curious. So Long Joe obviously is the big building on the left.
Yep.
And this is the lot on the corner.
Right.
It's a, it's a school that desperately needs green space, as those students aren't able to go outside at all.
No.
And I think it's a great start, so, all for it.
Appreciate that.
And I just have the one comment we were just talking about, on the proposal, any shrubberies, things that are at the corner, that in the, in the zoning ordinance, there's corner clearance requirement-
Okay.
-to making sure that you, the setback is enough for that, so when you, the car is at the end of the street, they can see.
Understood.
So we're talking about corner clearance, so it depends on the height and the type.
Yep, that makes, that makes perfect sense.
So just keeping that in mind, that's one eighty-one dot forty-one twenty-four.
Yeah, like-
Talks about like, twenty feet distance from the point of the intersection, and like a triangle.
Like, you know, the, this one on the corner could, could be problematic.
Yep.
Just, I, I would suggest, when you're, when you're ready to, when you're ready to, to set them, or you have locations, make sure you just converse with Sergeant Boudreau, police and DPW, just to make sure, same thing I said at the last hearing, too, make sure anything near the street isn't gonna have root systems that's gonna, you know, road or wear away at-
Yep.
-the sidewalk and street, but aside from that, you know, once, if you get the okay from DPW, I'm-
Yeah, so it's like, it's a triangle area, so it's just making sure you get psyched.
Oh, thank you, that's great feedback.
Yep. It's a-
We don't know this stuff, so it's, it's good-
We see that all the time.
Elaborate, yep.
Jeremy, is, just a quick question, is one, is one twenty Academy Street something the city is working on?
Well, so it's currently, yeah, it's currently a property, so one thirty is, it was an abandoned lot. One twenty is for sale. So, we are working with the city solicitor around the possibility of purchasing that. We would love to, because, you know, that would then provide, I think, a greater opportunity for the school system to then look at the rest of the Academy Street. You know, it's probably about a half acre from the corner parking lot on that side of Long Joe, down to, to the end of the street. There, there is a narrow sliver of a property in between that, that a resident on Pleasant Street owns, but one twenty is, like I said, current, and that's, I think, one twenty-six specifically, but one twenty is, is for sale, and we, and we are, we're hopeful, we're working on it, those are complex purchases.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's what we, that's how we feel.
Yep, I agree. Paul, just so you know, seven oh five-ish, Alex joined us, so.
Fantastic. Great. And so from us this evening, you're looking for a recommendation from the board to move forward with the grant application?
Just approval to pursue the grant, yep.
I'll make a motion, same thing we just did, an affirmative, positive recommendation for the purposes of applying for the grant, to the concept plans that were provided, subject to the board comments that, that we have mentioned.
All right, and, and there's a second, and we'll take roll call vote, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Alex?
Aye.
Ellen?
I get to be second, aye.
Ahah, Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good luck, keep you posted on the next.
Good luck if you're posted on the next steps. Thanks a lot. Have a great night.
You too.
Oh, wait a minute, so we need to, can you get control over to?
Oh, yep, let me just go talk to Dan.
Dan?
Who wants it, Tracy or Amanda?
Tracy. I'd be here for another two hours if you give it to me.
All right, I got to remember how to do it, right, so.
He's going to sit Tracy up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
We're going back to our public hearing segment, for which we have one item. And we have Paul Fontaine recusing himself, and he's leaving the meeting. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Got everything done before I left, that's awesome.
Paul's leaving at seven twelve.
Yep, yep.
I think I have it right here, but I just want to make sure. Two thousand sixteen, eleven. How many share screen?
Yeah, if you just, just click on, and then just pick your screen.
Right, that's what I'm, sure.
Yeah, and then what I usually do is, when, once I get where I want to be, I just pause it. If you're doing stuff in the background.
Okay.
Everyone's, everyone's not looking at emails and stuff. Thank you.
Great. All right, gentlemen, please feel free to come up to the, and sit in front of the mics.
Do you have six members?
Listen?
Yes, yep.
We do. Yes, so that's brought up, so as this is a modification of a special permit, it's still super majority, which is five, minimum of five out of the seven board member votes in order to, for it to be approved.
What would you like me to put up?
Um, let's start with, I know that we only had the hard copy last week, which was the actual picture of the building that was in reference to, or I gave guidance on the size.
Yeah, let's bring up that one. That one is, well, let's figure it out. Building height, see the one that says building height, AP, no, further up, APC three, I think, yeah. This is the one that you brought up to us at the board, at our last meeting. And our virtual members, Ellen and Alex, weren't able to see this at that time.
Correct.
So we want to bring that up, so, because this was quite, it did show quite a bit different than the prior one, where it's, where it still was three stories.
Correct.
So this, with this roof line, actually brings the height down.
That's not the most up-to-date drawing.
All right. Right, for the, I mean, for the elevation of the, I mean, but the height, it would be appropriate?
Well, that's, I mean, that hasn't changed since, but that's not the most.
Right, but we didn't have it last time.
Yeah.
That's the one that was supposed to have been the last time, but that drawing has been updated since the last.
Yeah, the elevation, but we're just looking at the height right now.
I also uploaded more documents, Bill sent them to me. So those are, I think, towards the bottom, and they are not numbered.
Oh, that's the, the site plan? Maybe it's that?
No.
Oh, the image.
Yeah, maybe one of the images.
No, the images have to do with the, like, the stone frontage. No, for the, but for that, for the, I think, is there another one about proposed?
Building height?
That was March eighteenth that was added. What are these?
Yeah, so the ones that got added later are probably the most recent ones.
Those are the pictures of the stone.
Right.
So the twenty-fifth, I do believe?
No, it's not the twenty.
Oh, that's the picture.
I think the one that we had was the one we were looking for, though. We're just looking at the building height.
Right.
Yeah, so bring that one back up again. Yes, we just wanted to talk about this. Because this is, Ellen specifically requested that, she wanted, making sure that we see this, because we saw it. Because previously, there was the one from November that showed it was three stories tall, and it seemed to be quite imposing.
Right.
To be built, for the building on the front edge. So this design seemed to be more in keeping with the colonial style as well. The other one was more of a, maybe the Mansard look, like, more of a historical district than it was for this country, like colonial look too. In keeping with it. Ellen, do you have any questions?
No, I'm glad it was in the, the packet this time around, because everyone reflected on how it was a game changer, and, and looking at it, and I can see, you know, the, the difference and, you know, the work that went into this, and this is very nice. It's very pleasing to the eye, and it, the heights look great.
All right. Okay, let's see, and which other, do you want to build, work at the building elevations next, or?
Yeah, let, let's go with the, the 3D, actually, if we do that.
This one? I don't know what I'm.
And I'll, I'll have to describe a few.
Maybe the bottom one?
I think it's. Down. Is it LP one? No.
No? No, that's the, part of the landscaping plan. We'll get it. Try. Is it, what is ACP one, two, and three?
No, that's not going to be, I don't think.
That's the floor plan.
That's the floor plan, okay. Well, there's a little bit, there's a landscaping plan in there too. You know the one you brought up with the gray?
It did pop up.
Towards the bottom, I think.
So that was South Street revised?
Yeah, thank you. See, you should have had.
Is that what we want up here?
No, it's not even on.
So this is the, with the building, the new kind of like look?
Correct, so.
Building elevation.
I'd like to look at this first, and then we can follow up with the actual pictures of the existing building. And the thought was, I wanted to match the look of the back building, would just make the most sense with the front building. And so on this building here, we're going to have, under the window wells, it's going to be a, like a faux stone. And in the center, where you see the two people walking in the main entrance, that whole front part will also be the gray stone. The top peaks on the four sides, exactly that one, this one, will be a shaker, like a gray shaker, which will complement the color of the siding. And when we go to the pictures on the next one, you'll see the exact material that we use in the back building, and it'll just be used in the front building. What wasn't showing on that picture, which you'll see on the landscape.
Did you want that? I thought you.
Yeah, could we just show that real quick, the, the previous one? And this was only because of, just due to the time to get this back out with the 3D renderings.
That one.
Okay, so what will be reflected, you'll see on the actual landscape plan, is the, where the two people are in the front. You'll see the win, the two windows, which are to the right of them. They will be mimicked, another strip of landscape ground cover on the front of the walkway.
Yes, okay.
Right, and you'll see that on the, correct, all the way down.
So you won't have an, see an exposed walkway all the way to the street? It'll be, you'll have some landscaping.
Okay, so we dressed up the front a little bit more, and you'll see that on the landscape plan when we get to that. And if you want to go to the materials.
And also notice the, before we leave this slide, there's no more vents.
Correct, that's right.
You're moving that, so that's a big change of, you're moving those to some regular, like, mini split pads in the back.
Correct, we're going to be, correct, it'll be.
Landscaped around.
Mini split system, and again, on the landscape, on the site plan, you'll see where we located those, and we've put some, you know, ornamental coverage for them also, in the back of the building, the back left of the building.
Okay, so now you want to see?
Yeah, if we could see the pictures of the actual material, that would be great. So it was a very bright sunny, at, at the point I took this, so, but this will give you a good, a good idea. With the gray, white, and then the stone look will be where I described, under those windows, and also up the center of the property with the two doors, and the facing South Street.
So you got that, we have center column piece, and so pretty much like the, like the foundation going around, you're going to have this.
Around the whole building, exactly, yep, so.
And I'll say that certainly makes a difference on, when you're looking at it from South Street. On the left, that elevation drops down, was neighbor, so that building height starts to go up. But when you have the different building materials, I think that helps break that up, keep that presence down. Versus it all being one color.
Right.
And when you start to break that up, so.
Right.
Pleased to see that you have different material there.
Yep, 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 and this, I think I have a couple other various pictures of just.
Yeah, you can't see it when it's the shades on it, you can't.
No, I know.
The, the material. There we go. You also, is that color, and are you using, is it also the color of the siding? Going to be one or the other, like on the, there or?
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah, it's going, I mean, the only difference will be, on this one, we didn't break the last, say, three or four feet with stone. We did siding all the way down with the stone accent and into the doorways. The difference will be, it'll be, the lower part will be accented with this stone look, as to having the two different shades, so that's why we'll break it.
Yep.
So.
That looked good. Peter, do you have any?
Well, I was just going to ask one question. Will there be a horizontal, kind of a beltline molding between the first and the second floors?
No.
Like there is in this building?
Yeah, I don't know.
It'll just be, I mean.
I don't think you'd snake to see that.
I mean, look like a zebra, I mean, there'd be like three lines going through this whole thing. I think that you really need that, that, that plane of color for those two.
Can we go back, can we back to that picture? I just wanted.
Which one?
The one, the 3D rendering?
The big one.
Rendering.
Yeah. What do you mean, Peter? Under, under the first?
Right.
Over the top windows?
Right, between the first and the second floors, to break up the building a little bit, like you did in the back. You said you were trying to match the building.
I was, here was my thinking behind that, that because we didn't do the stone on the lower part on the, the back building, if we went three different breaks, it may not look as appealing.
I can buy that, yep.
You know, so that was my thinking behind that.
That makes sense.
And I think it looks more house look with.
It does.
Here, because if you break it up, it's too much, it's going to be more like.
No, because that's obviously what I like, because that's what we did in the back building. So I, my thinking was that originally, but in looking at, in shrinking the building, I says, I don't know if having those three layers is going to.
You're absolutely right.
You know?
I like, and you've got the shutters on here too. I'll just say that kind of matches the neighborhood on the street side.
Colonial look.
No, it's got more modern, and, you know, the back where you don't have that, but this fits more in the front.
Yep.
Does anybody else have any questions regarding this elevation this time?
All right, so.
No, we'll go into, because then we'll dive into.
So while we're still talking about the building.
Yes.
There are some things that need to be discussed that were discussed in the last meeting. We said that we would carry forward into this meeting. On the exterior of the building, we're actually bringing in some wall sconces around. There was a question about lighting. So on our elevations, we're showing wall sconces. On the front of the building, flanking each door that's centered, we have wall sconces also in the ceiling of the, that entrance, we're going to have some downlights. So that'll be really well lit in that area.
Okay.
And then around the sidewalk, leading to the parking lot, all the way around the building, there are wall sconces that will shine down on the, on the plantings and the sidewalk. So rather than having what people used to do of having the big floodlights on the side of the building, that it just has glare shooting out from the building, we're not doing that. We're holding it closer to the ground, so we get more lighting at the ground, rather than, you know, a nuisance type of lighting.
So that lighting will be like above, above the stone level, the foundation level?
Above the stone, oh yes, yeah, it's shown on the, on the elevations. So rectangle, it says wall sconces.
When we get to the other diagram, you'll see.
Okay.
It's just the time, we, the person that does the 3D rendering, it's just the timing didn't line up to get the changes, so, you know.
Especially, yeah, when you, what, Thursday, you had a meeting?
True.
Yeah.
Do we have that?
That should be on, yes, that'll be on here, it'll show.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's see, which one?
Is it the?
Also, you're talking about the building, yeah, we removed the PTAC units, and like, I believe you had mentioned earlier, going to another system where we have condensers on the ground in the back of the building, that'll be screened.
Do you know which one might be?
And then also, we talked about handicap issues. You mentioned large doors. Well, I can't put larger doors in there right now, I mean, they're three-foot doors. I mean, they meet, they meet or exceed the code. So what I need to do, follow, follow the code. The code says, anything that's on the ground level needs to be a 1A type handicap accessible unit. And because we have more than twenty units on that site now, we have to provide a 2A unit, which is, which, the units that I'm showing will meet that too. And it's then, it's a little bit more strict, where you have room underneath, eventually room underneath, like sinks in the kitchen, all of those things that are a little bit extra. And, and we have to have that, but not when you open up. We can have it there, but it can be transferred into that, so it's not, how, how to explain this? It's a 2A, but then it can turn into a 2B, which will remove a few things to make it more accessible. So there are different levels of accessibility.
So it's going to be designed so it can even be more accessible?
That's correct.
Okay, so, but minimally, if you're going to be able to have like, the doorway width are going to be adequate for, for that? Absolutely.
Yeah, doorways, entrances.
We got sinks and like showers and things, so you got no.
No showers, you don't have to have showers.
Well, I meant no tub scenario. I meant, you're going to have, be able to.
Well, if, if you have two bathrooms.
Yep.
Then one has to have a shower. If you have one bathroom, you can have either a shower or a tub. So.
With the, it'll have to be set up for handicap.
Yeah, I want to make, yeah, just making sure that it is, so you don't have the threshold, so to speak, right?
Fresh, what about thresholds?
Tub. Making sure that it's not, you, that you don't, that you're able to, you know, not cross over a high threshold to shower. Right?
It'll meet code.
I understand about, right, meeting, like, you just mentioned again about a tub and a shower.
A tub or a shower, correct.
Right.
That, I can put a tub in these because there's one bathroom per unit.
I understand, but that's not a tub, though, a standard type of tub?
Pardon me?
A standard tub?
Yes.
Well, that's not, it's not, it's not, it's not a wheelchair, like, how are you going to?
It doesn't have to be.
I don't say that it doesn't have to be, like, we should, we're saying that we want to see that, like, we want it designed so that you don't have that. You're making it fully more handicap.
You want the wheelchair-bound person to be able to.
Right.
And the.
Just roll in.
Okay, so we want to, you want to go above what the, the code is requiring then? I just want to, you know.
Look, if you want to do the bare minimum in, it's.
Well, this is, it's a special permit, so the thing.
I don't have a problem with, and I, I know, right, bills these following what, what's required, what the code is, I, I get it. But if that's something that, you know, to put one, or a shower unit in there, just to have that extra accessibility, I mean, I, I'd be fine with that.
Okay, that was, because the thing that really sold me on, on this being more of a mixed thing is, is those four units being really fully handicap accessible, and not just like the, like the minimum, like, we want to see more, I think, something like that of, you know, if you have that. Like, we want to see more, I think, something like that of, you know, if you have that, you know, you're not having a tub, just have the roll, so people can have either or.
Any new construction in this city should be doing that. You know, anything that's on ground level, if you have an elevator in your building, all of the units need to meet handicap. So every one of these on the first floor, four of them are gonna meet handicap requirements.
Yes, and above. So to speak, I mean, we're asking for more.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
For that, so that's what I meant about, it's like, I understand you're gonna have the sink and you're just gonna put like the shower, like, make sure that you have a shower. If there's more than one bathroom, that's fine, but at least make one of them so that it's accessible that way.
I think that's where we, maybe in that conversation, had some confusion where we were thinking, we're meeting the requirements, but that's fine to go a little bit more.
Right.
I don't have a problem with putting in a tub and making it more.
And I don't think you're saying in every single one.
Well, just the four.
Yeah. So I don't, I mean.
Out of the four, out of the 10 units that you're proposing.
Right.
Here, those should have showers instead of tubs and making sure that you don't have, you can roll a wheelchair in or whatever, no one can cross the threshold to shower.
You're asking for all four to have showers?
Yes.
I thought you meant just one or two of them.
Out of the handicap units?
Yeah.
Well, we hadn't come up for discussion previously, because I guess I had assumptions. And what's the hurdle?
I, I just, I was just thinking that to make sure that those first floor units all were, fell under the ADA requirements, and that's really what I pushed on with Bill, is to make sure everything is. I guess I didn't know that we were gonna go an extra layer to put all four of them, no.
I guess my expectation, I guess when you say the ADA, is that's what I think when I seek ADA. So I don't know the code of, like, here's the minimum for ADA, but that my expectation is that that's ADA. Is, yeah, you're gonna be able to.
We're not gonna be following the federal law, we're gonna be following the state law. Massachusetts access.
If we put, I mean, I guess, what's the?
So why, why, I guess, why would you not want to put in just showers instead of having? You've got tub units elsewhere, why is everybody doesn't desire a tub? These are two bedroom units.
Sure, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I mean, tubs are, I mean, a lot of people, I like a tub.
A lot of people like tubs.
A lot of people like tubs, so the thinking is that a tub would be, but to have, to accommodate, you know, with the ADA or a wheelchair, I mean, I don't have a necessary.
We'll put it to the, we'll ask the board whether, how many, so you think, two?
Two, I.
Out of the four?
That's reasonable, yes. I'd be willing to put two.
Are you thinking of it more from a marketing perspective or actually that this would interfere with someone's accessibility or to the?
No, we have, because remember, the back building is the whole level, the lower level and the second level is all handicap accessible. So we do have that ability there also, so there's actually a lot on that site in general.
So, so that's the thing of, it's gonna be somewhat different of like, here's something a little, like, here's, here's our mixed use apps, you know, pieces, we're going a little bit further on being, what's different from just regular, the other apartments that you already have scenario. So it's like, how are you, how are you accommodating that, another, another aspect or another need?
Sure.
So it's just trying to mix it up.
Sure. Yeah, I don't think that it's a decision that I'm pushing on either way to do with marketing. I appreciate Bill's side of it, that he's just looking at it, here's the code, here's what you do, Lance, that's it.
I see that.
And at the same time, would I, would I like tubs over showers, typically yes, but I would be in the middle as far as some type of compromise to say, yes, so many units could be tubs, that's fine. So.
And, and we can come back to that, too.
Okay.
So two and two, correct, then that's what you want, two tubs and two?
Oh, we're gonna come back to it, I guess we'll.
But that's what you're thinking about right now, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you want me to put up next?
I think we were gonna show a picture of the.
Unit, the floor.
Actual design of the building, which shows the sconces and the.
I can't find that.
It was given to you.
Doesn't seem to be in this folder, do you know what the name of it?
Uh, try.
It should be A 2.1 revision number nine.
There is A 2.1, so is that further up?
How do you see that?
Up, higher, 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 2.1.
Yeah, let's.
A CP 2.1.
Is that today's date on it?
I don't, well, we'll be able to tell right away if it's the right one.
Not it.
Yeah.
Ah ha.
That's it, right, that is the.
Yep, that's it, yeah. So you can see, I don't know if you could blow it up at all, the South Street view.
Hold on.
But you can see the sconces we have. Yeah, there we go. And you can get a more of a feel with a, kind of the stone look under the windows and then up the face, and then the top will be the shaker. And then as you come down, you'll, you'll see where the two doors are, we have the two sconce lights and they're running across the building of the walkway.
And you said those doors go into the units, right?
Correct.
One, on each side.
Correct.
And the sconces, are those like lantern types or?
Yeah, they can be a decorative lantern, that's gonna be like a wash lighting almost.
And then that's the side that goes down to the parking lot?
This, uh.
Is that the other side?
Yeah, that's it.
Yes.
So the, yeah, this, yeah, this is part of the parking lot.
Correct, yeah, you're pulling into it, yeah.
All right, can we take a look at the rear?
That's the.
The rear entrance?
Yeah, yes, you'll see the same thing, sconces running down, two over there, and again, under that, where the door is, where the small roof outlay is, there's gonna be lighting that's also in there.
Is that?
Right on the walkway.
Where the stairway would be to upstairs from this?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, does that door go into the other?
It goes into the other first floor units and the stairway.
And the stairway.
Yes, correct.
I was just, and it's like, I know.
In the front.
You mentioned about like.
In the front, right.
The code, making sure that maybe the door, doors are extra wide, I was, I know you want it, it's on the backside, but are the doors large enough for, you know, furniture and things of that nature, whether or not you think of it?
It's a three foot wide door.
So you're okay with that?
Yeah, we do have those now in the back building and there's never been so far an issue with.
Okay.
You know, moving or complaining.
And then here's the side that's facing the butter with the window wells and.
Correct.
What, two apartments?
Correct, correct, and you see we added the landscape in there to kind of just give a little more coverage.
Okay. Yes. Does any board member have any questions about this?
Not yet, no.
Okay, and I know before we move on to the next thing, I'm gonna take some public comment on the elevation portions of it and then, because we're gonna move into landscaping and other aspects. Do you have any, you have any comments or questions you'd like to?
Yes, Phil. Hi, Beth Holland, Nova Lev. I have a question regards to, is this, this building going to be residential?
Yes.
All residential?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, is there going to be a sidewalk? A reasonable sidewalk put in front of this building? Because there's nothing there at all, there's no sidewalks. Maybe a little towards Ashley, but there's no sidewalk. Not even to Richards, and I wonder if they even addressed Richards issue, if they got a hold of Mr. Black? I can't think of Richards' name.
I think Black here.
About the fencing.
And when we get into the landscaping, we're gonna ask that question.
Great.
The sidewalk, we required as part of the special permit to go from their driveway all the way in front of Ashley Ridge to connect up to the sidewalk so that people from this complex have full access to the sidewalk that can.
So they can go left and right on a sidewalk?
No, there is no going right in front of the complex, there's no sidewalks to connect to in that direction, so that's why there's no sidewalk.
That's a big fault of this city, there's no sidewalks. But I guess it is what it is, okay, so that's all gonna be residential?
That's what's proposed, instead of, instead of the, previously it was a 4,500 square foot office complex. That was restricted to pretty much non-retail, had to be service oriented type of businesses to minimize the traffic. We also had them address the traffic with this, it'd be even less traffic than if it was a business or offices here to be, to be residential. So they are proposing to modify the permit from that commercial piece that was also approved as what's called the planned unit development, so, which was looking at it as a mixed use from the residential in the back to the office in the front. So they're proposing, because of the demand now, too, well, and the economics and the need for housing, to change that into housing versus it being.
So that whole unit's all gonna be residence?
Yes, they're all, if I say this incorrectly, they're 10 units, two bedrooms. And the first floor, the four of the units are also going to be ADA accessible units.
Is there any future to, with the city addressing any kind of widening the road from South Street, I mean, from Electric Ave towards Route 2 in front of that property? Because there's a lot of instances, I have to go way over on my left side to get to my road so people don't ram me. I'm not saying it's anything to do with that area right there, but it's getting so congested right there. So I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed when things get excavated and so on and so forth in the future in that property.
Okay.
That they might want to widen it, and that little area where the ramp is supposed to go to where the sidewalk is, that's that whole, right in front of Ashley there, that is just too thin. So I'm basically really going way over to the left, still having cars coming at me to get into my road. So that area, they need to.
Talking like, almost like it's, almost like another, like a lane so you can turn?
Some, a lane, I can get into my road, but it's a matter that I, I'm adjusting myself going more towards head on to the, to the traffic that's coming. So it's becoming a little riskier all the time. So when they do go do the excavation, I think that it's recommended that they widen that road in front of them there, just a little, I'm talking like a foot, because there's so much traffic that goes down on that street. I think it's just, it's just getting, it's gonna get congested.
More when you get, it widens out when you turn onto a Ramon Av scenario.
Yeah.
It's a little wider at that spot.
Mm-hmm. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, appreciate you coming this evening and participating.
Been gone for many years now.
It has been, so.
Many years. All right, thank you, good luck.
All right, and is there anybody in our virtual world you can check on, too? There's more to see, but I just want to check to see if there's. Can anybody see that? I'm not sure what you're clicking on, like. Thank you, Dan. It's like, Dan, can you check, thank you. All right, do you want to go into the landscaping aspect?
Sure, sure.
Just here for a reminder.
Is that that one? That's this one, right?
We're just gonna make, we're gonna make sure we get the right one.
That's the right one.
That is, yeah.
Why can't we go?
So if maybe we could.
Maybe.
If I go out, it goes way out.
Yeah, start from the blow up of the building, we're gonna move our way down.
Okay, right there?
Yep.
Perfect.
You just have to draw, you just have to use the bars at the bottom and the side to move it.
Yep.
So the changes that were made to this, this landscaping was, we removed the arborvitae from the front that was just there temporarily. And we moved them over to the, to the side yard between the neighbor and there's some white pines that we're being shown along with a fence. So those were all moved down into that area to fill in that whole area, to make it a little bit more dense and probably more appropriate than having it lined up like little soldiers out front.
Did you speak with Mr. Black here?
So I have, in the past, since the last meeting, I have stopped at his house personally three different times. One of the last times I went, there was a black car in the driveway and I felt there was someone home, but no one came to the door.
Okay.
And the last time I went, I have dropped a letter off that basically an introduction letter of myself and a phone number to call, so.
Okay.
I really made a sincere effort in trying to get a hold of him and if and when he calls, I'd be happy to go over with him and show him, you know, what we're doing and to put extra trees or anything that he wants, I'm gonna accommodate it, you know, it's not a big deal for me.
And I don't think this is dissimilar from what the original plan was.
Uh, no, we just.
You've got some extra arborvitae there.
It's like another layer.
There was always gonna be white pines in part of the fence.
Yeah, so there'll still be white pines and then arborvitae will be behind those.
Yep.
And then the fence, right?
And that piece of fence, yep.
Yes.
There's a white vinyl fence there that way?
Yes, and the white vinyl fence.
Okay.
Correct.
Then the next row behind that, between the building and the relocated arborvitae, is some more low planting along the foundation and the window wells. That was requested to have some planting along there, so we're showing some low, low plantings along there, evergreen.
Good, you'll see that coming up South Street, that's gonna be a big view, you'll see that side.
Sure, yeah, that was a good suggestion.
So then to the left of that, towards the parking lot, is where the, the condensing units are gonna go for the split systems. And around it on two sides, screening the neighbor again, is a fence, a five foot, I think, yeah, five foot high fence, I believe, around that. And then another layer of landscaping. So not only, you know, for screening for, for vision, but also screening for sound.
Okay. Are you only doing it on the one side, you just may want to consider it on your parking lot side, too, potentially?
Yeah, we don't really need it on the parking lot side. If we put it there, then any sound that will be coming from there would, would tend to want to reflect back the other way, so it's better just to have one wall, so any sound that's reflected will just.
Okay.
Go into the parking lot. Let's see, a little bit farther up, we're showing, in the parking lot, there are a couple clouds in red. In that parking lot, we're showing two EV stations for charging and then one on the other side next to the handicap space for EV charging.
Yeah, is that like, is it, is it 10 or 20% of parking now has to have?
20%.
20%.
And so we're showing three and that's, what's needed for this building is, what do we say? One and a half per, so that's 15, and so 20% of 15 is three.
Yep.
So that's taken care of that part of it now, along the front, we added along the sidewalk, the access sidewalk to the front doors, we added another layer of landscaping of low, they're getting low evergreen with dark mulch, you know, connecting the planting area at the corner. And within that corner is going to be a ground sign, you know, low to the ground.
Oh, which corner?
Two sided, so you can see from either, approaching it from either, either way on South Street.
Okay, yeah, I mentioned like, make sure we put, approve any location of signage, so as long as it's not in the sight distance, right?
Correct.
He's making sure they got sight distance.
Yeah, it's not gonna be right up to the property line, so you can't see after the road.
It's either that or you, it's on the other bed, on the other side by the fence even, but might think about that.
I've been going back and forth on even putting one there, you know, because of the sights and the, you know, the placement, because if we, I thought about on the other side, then you only see it really one way.
From one way.
You know, so, so we figured we put it on there and try to come up with some type of concept as low as we can.
Or it's set back if it's not, well, yeah, you're not gonna set so much for the street.
Too far back, once the, you can't see it.
Yep.
Well, yeah, it's set back. But yeah, it's set back, you know, and, and will meet all of the sign regulations. Um, and then, let me see, what else did we do here?
It's cogs hole.
Cut for the other sidewalk.
Yeah, and then I, you know, we, we clouded a, a note for doing the curb cuts on the other property down the street.
Yes, for the, correct.
Correct.
Yep. And that because that just goes with their whole accessible piece to making sure everybody can get connected to the school, the park, everything, and connect to the sidewalk, because otherwise everybody just takes a tour up to Ashley Ridge. Has to turn around.
Right, right. Yep, that's in the details there, and I think that-
That should be it.
That, if you go lower into the other building, we put a dog, uh-
Oh, that's right down at the, it's the very end of the building in the backyard.
Oh, um-
To the left, more, more, more.
Yep, right there.
Right there.
And then we're going to have a sign, you know, saying that this is, uh, you know, the exercise area, whatever.
Please pick up, you know?
Right.
Amenities there. Any qu- any questions or comments or anything else?
Design looks good to me. I mean, there's been, there's been an awful lot of, a lot, a lot of thought, compromises, you know, and modifications, uh, to the original plan. And, uh, I know that the original plan, everyone was talking about the, the height of the structure. And, and even though the height of the structure, uh, may not be much different than it is right now, basically with a good architect, it gives you the illusion of being much smaller.
Right.
And the, and the whole, the whole building having much less mass.
Mm-hmm.
Much less of a presence.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, because of that, I think the structure just fits nicely on the lot. It's not a, it's not going to stick out like it's a wall or something like that. It blends in to what you've done. So I think you've done a, a good job, uh, with the, with the building. And the additional landscaping is always a plus. And I think the city, uh, is in need of housing, like I said at the last meeting. And, uh, to have quality housing is a, is a plus. So, well-located, you know, close to Route Two.
Absolutely, and I think that it's going to represent the city well because it's one of the main routes coming into Fitchburg.
Mm-hmm.
Where, you know, you're going to see this as you're coming into the downtown.
Right.
So I think it's one of those things, you know, anytime I drive into a city, you start observing, you know, real different properties around, you get a feel for the city. And I think that it, it really is a, a key place for that. You know, so I think that the beauty of it will go, you know, will speak for the, for the city.
And then also the quality of the construction. I mean, that's what sold the other building, you know, the filled ground. I mean, it's, um, spacious units, um, and highly-
Efficient.
Energy-efficient.
Handicap units, that's a huge plus.
Right. Yeah, I, I don't think, maybe we even talk about this, the, the nature of this construction is very unique. There's no buildings in our whole area that are built with this. This te- this is a technology which is called ICF construction, uh, which is, you just don't find it. Uh, it's extremely, it's a very green construction type for energy preservation, uh, which is the combination of the concrete and styrofoam systems they use. So it's a very unique construction.
And you were mentioning that how thick the walls were, is that part of that with the insulation with how thick-
Correct, yes, yes, yeah, for sound, for, um, you know, your, your R-values, your, it's everything. It just contributes to that.
So it's now you just have to work on, you know, painting, getting that fence painted on the side.
Correct, I, that the offer still stands.
For that. Have you communicated with them at all or sent a letter or?
I, I haven't, I haven't, no.
Okay.
But I, I'd be willing to, I, I definitely want that to look, look nice.
At least you might want to at least think of, um, you know, some of the, like a tall spike of arborvitae style of something, spire, to, to plantings in front of it on the hill to kind of-
Right.
Soften it up or something, just a thought, you know? But it's, you, you write about that. Interimally with that. So, board members have any questions or comments? And also we can like circle back to if anybody has any objections or preferences. The four units on the main floor, this, uh, ten units, four on the main floor, four on the second floor, two in the basement, and the four on the first floor are going to be ADA accessible, similar to the ones he has in the back apartments. But also at least two of the units, um, will have the, uh, straight showers versus, uh, tubs. And if, I agree.
Follow this to Alex?
Yes.
I just want to commend them. This is, uh, a much, uh, a better job than the, the one we saw, that I saw last time. So this is a big improvement. So I want to commend them for that.
Thank you.
I know.
I think the front, I, the, the different, the stone, the shaker, the siding, that, I think does it, you know, I mean, before, the first, the very first, and, you know, a few months ago, was just like, it was so boxy. Where this, it just breaks it up enough that I think it, it does fit into the neighborhood much better.
Thank you.
Everybody wants to see something on that spot.
Yes.
I know.
Just right there.
I know.
Because all you're seeing it, right, is the parking lot.
Yes.
Front of that. So this will be a great en- enhancement and meeting the, um, community need for housing as well.
Yes.
And that, and, uh, yes, great, and we appreciate your efforts. I know it's been a long haul with this. It started last spring.
It has. We, we take, uh, a, a good percent, or I take a good percentage of the blame myself, so.
Well, it's, it's at, at whatever pace you're looking at, um, um, for, but it's, uh, appreciated that you're taking all the board's, uh, comments into consideration with this too, and again, proposing, um, this modification. So we do have, there were any department comments?
I'm not bringing that, I have that up.
Oh, you do have that. Regarding the off-site curb cuts proposed to be constructed of the asphalt and with tactile warning services, DPW Engineering typically requires that the transitions be set with specific VA four dash six by eighteen inch granite and the tactile warning panels be set in concrete as opposed to hot mix asphalt. Please contact DPW Engineering for specs. In addition to the ramps at 535 South Street, please consider previous requests from February twenty-seventh, twenty-four meeting. Applicant should strongly consider improving ADA access to the site by installing ADA ramps in our RRFB to facilitate access to and from the site. Are they actually meaning the, um, on, on ramp? If you just push the site plan down just slightly to show the, uh, sidewalk, yeah, that piece? Just trying to, and we'll forward you this comment to work out with DPW on there.
Are they referring to this?
That's, uh, I can read it again. Is there anybody from DPW on? I don't think so. Dan, is there any, is Jeff or Nick?
No one from DPW.
Okay, all right. Just trying to make sure I'm reading it. I just read it verbatim. Applicant, uh, previous request from the last meeting, applicant should strongly consider improving ADA access to, to the site by installing ADA ramps and/or RRFB to facilitate access to and from the site.
Do they mean to the building itself?
Well, we, we don't really need ramps because we don't have the, the rise that you need for a ramp.
It's talking about facilitating access to and from the site, so I'm thinking, is, or, or are they meaning like at that corner there?
Yeah.
Um, particularly?
Well-
Or actually moving the ramp like to the corner?
But that's not, you can have a slope and it's not considered a ramp. So a one and twenty slope, you, it's not a ramp. Um, and that's what we're going to have throughout there. You, you don't need handrails, you don't need any of that with a one and twenty slope.
True, but it's talking about on and off the site, so I don't know.
Final gr-
Yeah.
Sidewalk?
The sidewalk piece coming on, well, we don't have a top coat final also, so I don't know if that maybe is where the-
I know, right, because I mentioned that, because it's, it's still a lip right there. Also, in, typically too, I, it's like you have the, uh, the, to getting on the sidewalk there, typically they're at the corner at the public way because someone, to get on the ramp, you're going to have to go into your driveway. Get on and off the, you know what I'm saying, versus it being-
Coming from that site because there's no sidewalks, right?
Right. Well, say someone across the street wants to get on the sidewalk.
But there's an acrosswalk from across the street to there.
No, I understand.
And there isn't a curb cut across the street either.
Yeah, I guess we have to define what they're-
Right, so I think you need to, what that recommendation is for- Talking about on and off the site. Is that, we can go back to our February twenty-seventh, see the co- if they make the similar comment? And then regarding the off-site curb cuts proposed to be constructed of asphalt and with tactile warning, engineering typically requires transitions, and you probably understand that VA four, six by eighteen inch granite and tactile warning panels be set in concrete as opposed to hot mix asphalt. Please contact DPW Engineering for specs.
Well, is he saying that because we proposed having asphalt curb cuts at the other property?
Yeah, that's what he's talking about.
The tactile surfaces, so he's saying he doesn't want-
Tactile surface in asphalt, he wants it in a, in a concrete pad if you're doing tactile.
Interesting.
I think that's what I'm getting from that. Is this where you want me to look from in November?
The asphalt and then just go with concrete now on the, on the curb cuts?
Yeah, because he wants that-
I mean, you can-
That yellow set into the-
Into the concrete.
Right.
It's just in those spots where you're having the tactile pad.
Yeah.
Yeah, so wherever we have the, the curb cuts, so we have four, four curb cuts, two off-site and two on-site. And we'll make those out of concrete with, with the tactile warning.
Like that, okay. And we'll forward this comment, actually, to you. We can, Chantel, you can forward him the DPW comments, because we just got that.
Yes.
Concrete. At the three locations. Four locations, yeah. See, uh, can you scroll down a little bit, Tracy? There's a, um, um, I'm sorry, up. And then to the left a little bit, so the box to the left says curb cut note. General contractor shall furnish and install two new asphalt curb cuts with tactile surface warnings per Massachusetts Access Board. Located on the Butter's driveway entrance, Ashley Ridge, South Bend. So that's what we're talking about over there, and then he's going to do the same over here. I think that's what he was getting at.
I believe so.
The two and these two.
Right.
Alex or Lynn, do you have any, um, further comments or questions?
Nope, um, nothing from me.
Okay.
Nothing from me either.
All right. Any but from the board here present? No, Amanda?
No, um, I'm good, ready to go.
Okay.
You want a motion to-
All right, yes, let's make a motion.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. The motion's been made with a-
Second?
Second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Roll call vote. Alex?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. All right, any discussion?
I'm ready to vote.
Looks like, um, for the plans that were submitted, we have the elevations. It was like AC two, ACP two elevation with the sconces. We'd use as the elevation with the materials as submitted.
Correct.
Showing, so you've just got the shingle, you've got the vinyl, you've got the stone, you've got the placements where those are going to be on the building. And per the landscaping plan provided here.
Correct.
As well, what else do we have? With all of the lighting, you've got the, all of the, um, AC units are going to all be to the rear with all the screening. And just with the comment about doing the, um, the sidewalk for the DPW comment. And doing at least minimum of two of the units having showers on the, on the handicap side versus the, out of the four. Anything else? Am I forgetting one?
I don't think so.
Okay. What's your timeline?
Yesterday. Um, I'm hoping, I mean, obviously, before we went further with, um, structurals or anything else, we wanted to make sure we got to this point. So from, you know, this point forward, we're going to push with getting all the finalized structurals, mechanicals, uh, a bit at the mercy of the engineers for that. But I'm hoping that maybe two months, three months, something like that.
Great.
Is real, I think, fairly realistic. Is that good or?
Three is realistic.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So.
Oh, okay. Just looking at like a timeline, you think you can complete this in, um, within a year?
What if I answered it a lot faster than the back building? Would that cover me? The goal would be, uh, within a year.
Within a year.
From, from starting to finish, yes.
Okay.
So.
Most likely the-
I mean, we got caught-
The soul of the building is probably going to be up before it gets cold.
Why don't we say eighteen months?
Okay.
I give a buffer.
That's fair.
With that. All right, and there we have it.
Motion to approve the special permit and site plan modification for 579 South Street, number twenty sixteen dash eleven.
Yep, with, with conditions-
With the conditions that the chair has recorded.
All right, and?
Alex seconded.
There's a second, Alex is the second, and we'll take roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Alex?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. You'll be happy with the finished product. You're welcome. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Yes. And with that being said, if there's, there are no other matters before us this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
With a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 None opposed?
Aye.